Good morning. The... I'd ask if there are any amendments to today's agenda.
Madam Chair, amendment I would like to make, I make a motion to modify the agenda to move all the items from the, um, of business from the Thursday regular board meeting agenda to today's work session with the intent to cancel the regular board meeting to accommodate participation by our board members in the elementary school orientations that are scheduled for the same time.
Second, thank you, and I have, so I have a motion from Vice Chairman Mason and a second from Ms. Gibbs. Is there any discussion on this? The motion is to move the items from the Thursday, um, agenda. Yes, Ms. Stacy?
Ms. Kitzinger had her hand up first.
Oh, yes, Ms. Kitzinger.
Well, I would just say, um, we were aware of this potential scheduling conflict, um, earlier than today, uh, and canceling Thursday's meeting means that that opportunity for public input is removed for parents who can't be here this morning. So, um, I think that is an oversight on our part, and I, I wish that we had done a better job of scheduling, um, when we initially adopted the calendar or somewhere in between. Um, and so I think it's a little late, while I agree with the intent of not having the meeting conflicting with orientation, I think the lack of notice to members of the public is a problem.
Yes, Ms. Kitzinger?
Um, my comments are about the same. I would just like to, uh, say that we were having discussion about this last week, and we could've canceled this last week and made adjustments from there. So, that's it.
Thank you. There, are there any other comments or discussion? Okay, and, um, for the benefit of the public, the board meeting calendar is approved well in advance of, of these items, so, um, hearing no additional discussion. Um, Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote for this item?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
No.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kitzinger?
Nope.
Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes. Thank you. So, we are modifying today's agenda. That motion is just to modify today's agenda to move the, um, Thursday agenda items onto today's agenda. Um, I also would say for the benefit of the public that, um, prior to this year and this board, we did not have two sessions of public input. We only had that during one session, so, um, we will have public input this morning as scheduled, so. Um, Vice Chairman Mason, would you please review the safety procedures?
In the event of a fire emergency, we'll split the room in half. The right side will exit out the door to my left, the left side will exit out the door to my right. Those moving to my right will go into the parking lot towards the bagel shop. Those moving to my left will go out to the digital sign near Glenn Burney as far away from the building until the fire department comes and clears the building.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Mr. Brian Gatchell to lead the invocation.
Board members, if you'll please pray with me. Holy and compassionate God, keep your watchful eye upon us and place your hand on our lives. Guide us in the way we should go. Remind us again that wherever we are, in whatever situation we find ourselves, we are neither lost nor alone. And may we acknowledge our hunger for your presence and our dependence on your guidance. For as much as we think we can do it alone, fighting against your wisdom, we need a deeper understanding that our joy and our satisfaction can only be found in you. We are your children, the ones you have deigned to love with a love so encompassing that we need only trust in you. Yield to your instruction and live as you would have us live. May this be our aim today and all days. We pray this in your sovereign name. Amen.
Thank you. Um, I would like to ask Ms. Darlene Gibbs to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand with us for that.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we want to recognize our, some of our special guests that are here with us today. Um, our parent representative, Ms. Carolyn Squires, she has two students at Oaks Road Academy. Um, we also like to welcome some of our student guests today, Ms. Madison Wood and Mr. Gabriel Cox, and they are joining us today from Craven Early College. We thank you all for being here with us today. Um, we have, um, Janice Simmons with us today, and we are proud to recognize her and thank her for her service as our Teacher of the Year for 2425. Um, her dedication to her students and her advocacy on behalf of teachers as an advisor to the board have been invaluable. We thank you very much for your service, and we wish you a very successful school year ahead. Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Um, our, our Teacher of the Year in the new year is, um, Ms. Margaret Jackson, uh, from Grover C. Fields, and she's not able to be here with us today because she's, uh, has a little knee injury, I hear, so, we wish that she could be here with us today. Um, and, um, looking around, if I'm missing, we have some principals in the room today. We thank you for coming out today, um, and, um, we thank all the members of the public for joining us today. So, um, next up is the, um, public input portion of our meeting, and I would just like to confirm with Vice Chairman Mason, um, whether we've had people? Okay? And before we start with that, um, I just, um, want to thank all of you for coming, um, to speak to the Board of Educations and just, um, give a few reminders about our public input portion. Oh, I skipped right over an important item before we go into public input. We, um, the superintendent's report. Sorry. I'm looking at my meeting notes in a little bit different format, and I skipped right over it. So, um, I'm going to call up Ms. Jennifer Wagner to give us the district update, and then we'll go back to public input.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have lots of great highlights and celebrations to share with you as we approach August and get ready for the beginning of the new school year. So first, I want to share that we are always excited to have our early colleges set the tone for a great school year and are so thankful that our early college students are here with us today. Craven Early College and Early College East kicked off with their well-attended orientations on July 31st and August 1st, and it was great seeing our students on the first day of school, which was August 4th. We always thank our early colleges for setting the tone for a great year. Next, we had BT orientation, and we rolled out the red carpet for our beginning teachers for their three-day orientation on August 6th through the 8th. Thank you to all who participated to help us welcome our newest educators and share what makes Craven County schools the choice for our students, families, staff, and community. With support from the beginning teacher coordinators and district leaders, our newest professionals gain the tools, insights, and connections they need for a strong start. Our nurses, CTE, transportation, school nutrition, and principals, we've had our kickoff meetings, so all of our district kickoff meetings have helped set the stage for a fantastic year. These meetings provide an opportunity to share updates and inspire our staff so they are ready for a year filled with learning, growth, and unforgettable moments. We also have some facility updates, um, that happened over the summer, um, so it's always nice to see our buildings as they shine. So JT Barber has some classrooms with new flooring. Bangert was painted and a new media center flooring. Tucker Creek Middle, as you know with your approval, has started their painting. Bendy Quinn also was painted. Oaks Road Academy had a trailer remodeled. Roger Bell New Tech Academy had an outdoor classroom. James W. Smith had a pre-K trailer remodeled, and Bendy Quinn, Vanceboro Farm Life, and Havelock High School all have new generators, which couldn't be more perfect with a storm approaching. We also have, over the summer, remediation work that took place at Vanceboro Farm Life Elementary to address areas of concern related to mold. This work was completed with the health and safety of our students and staff as a top priority. Following the completion of the remediation, LRC Indoor Testing and Research conducted a final inspection. Their report states, "The visual observations, moisture measurement, and air surface sample results reflect that a normal indoor fungal ecology and meet our clearance criteria." So Vanceboro Farm Life is all set that, um, for, and have clearance for, and meet the standards for the new school year. These spaces are ready for the start, and we look forward to welcoming our students back to a safe, healthy, and engaging learning environment. This past Saturday, we had Stuff the Bus. Pi held this event on August 16th at Staples, and it was full of school spirit. Thank you to all who supported their efforts, which directly impact our students. It was wonderful to see so many schools and community members at the event. With more than $25,000 in contributions, 160 boxes of school supplies, and 10 advanced drop-off locations, Pi was able to provide thousands of supplies directly to our schools, so we can't thank them enough for their support. And welcome back to our traditional school staff. Yesterday was the first required workday, and with school leaders creating and inviting environment with their kickoff meetings to help welcome everyone back. And this week, of course, as you mentioned earlier, is our traditional schools' back-to-school orientation. Our high schools are this evening from 5:00 to 7:00. Middle school is tomorrow from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., which is floating, so you can attend anytime during those hours. And elementary school is on Thursday from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. We look forward to having our students and families back on campus. It's just not the same without them. And of course, our first day of school is Monday, August 25th, and everybody is very eager to get everyone back in the building. High school athletics, cross-country, girls volleyball, boy soccer and football are underway. We look forward to cheering on all of our student athletes. A special thank you to our cheerleaders, dance, and band who always help create an excellent environment at the games for our students, families, and community. Most of these students have been practicing all summer for this fun fall season, so we look forward to supporting them during this time. And last month, I shared that Ms. Sigonia Wade, JT Barber Elementary School, was a semifinalist for the Age of Learning Educator of the Year Award, which honors an educational leader devoted to a mission of guiding students to success. Well, we are happy to share she has been named as one of the six finalists. So we are patiently waiting to see who will be announced as this year's winner. We are so proud of Ms. Wade on this accomplishment. And that completes my report of highlights for August.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Thank you.
So, we will now move into our public input portion of our meeting, and Vice Chairman Mason has confirmed that we have one person who has signed up for public input, and so before we, um, invite that person to the podium, um, I just want to thank everyone again for coming, um, and thank you for coming to speak to the Board of Education. Speakers will address the board from the speakers podium at the front of the room and begin your remarks by stating your name and address. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. However, the board, in accordance with our policy, will include a discussion of public input on the agenda, at which time the board may discuss issues raised in the public comment portion of the meeting. The Board of Education is here to listen to those who have signed up, and our speakers will be called upon one at a time, and will have up to five minutes for speaking. If you're still speaking when the alarm sounds, please take your seat. The decorum for our public meeting is to be polite and civil and respectful, and I ask that your comments to the board be focused, polite, do not include any personal attacks or name-calling, and to be directed to the board. Please refrain from applause and outbursts while our speakers are at the podium. Thank you all for your cooperation, and at this time, Vice Chairman Mason, would you like to tell us who is here?
Mr. Paul Hill.
Mr. Hill?
Thank you very.
You know the drill.
Yes, my name is Paul Hill. I'm from 914 Crooked Creek Drive here in Newark. Been here about 18 years. I initially had intended to talk about AI today and how it's going to impact all of the schools because it really is a fundamental change. It was interesting that while I was driving here this morning, uh, listening to the radio, two commercials came on from companies, and what were they advertising? The integration of AI into their products and the services that they'll be delivering to the public, which means our students, our parents, et cetera. I've chosen, chosen to change my topics, but left this, my script for the AI part as part of my handout, so you get, you get two for the price of one. While conducting my AI, uh, research for my AI presentation, I realized that Craven County lacks the consistency, uh, of an enforced curriculum. Remember that the board is responsible for the curriculum, not, not DPI, not the Board of Education, not some, not the governor. This board is responsible for that. Uh, it, it's, uh, in addition, it was clear that the procedure teaching tools that we have purchased and are not being really effectively utilized, and in some cases apparent that the adequate training has not been provided. I encourage the board to request that the curriculum staff prepare a presentation on the use of all available teaching tools and the level of training provided to each teacher to be identified. Uh, this presentation that would be prepared, uh, would be given to the board at the next session so they can make whatever adjustments they believe in the process of direct, uh, of developing a consistent curriculum across the school system itself. I thank everybody for, uh, their time and future considerations of this. I will be available at the end if anybody would like to ask any questions. I will make one more comment on the, on the AI, and to give you some idea of how pervasive we're starting to see that come into our society and how many adjustments we need to make. Uh, about three weeks ago, my car sitting in the garage informed me that it had just downloaded Grok, which is one of the more powerful of the AI packages on my car. That's in addition to the other AI package on my car, which drives the damn thing. So, it, it, that gives you some idea of the impact that we're seeing coming into us. The kids already use these tools. As a matter of fact, preparing this particular presentation, I used a package called Grammarly, which is totally AI-driven. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Um, our agenda calls for a, a break at this time, um, and typically, even though we've only been in session for about 20 minutes, I'd like to honor that break on the agenda for folks who were staying to hear public input but might want to make an exit. So we will, at this time, take a five-minute break. The board is back from our break, and we will continue on the agenda with, um, we will be, we will continue by calling up, um, Nurse Luann Forsyth, who is going to provide us some information on a new curriculum, Too Good for Drugs curriculum.
Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
I am happy to have joining me, um, Ms. Kaitlin Godley, who is the opioid program manager for Craven County. And she, um, if there are any questions about funding of this curriculum, she is more than happy to take your questions. So today, I bring before you the Too Good for Drugs curriculum. Um, this is not requiring action, this is information. It is funded by the, um, opioid settlement funding received by Craven County. Too Good for Drugs is a curriculum, a research-based, evidence-supported program that will equip our students with the knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to make healthy choices, resist peer pressure, and avoid substance use, misuse. It is developed by the Menendez Foundation that aligns with the North Carolina Health Education Standards. This curriculum has been vetted by Mr. Jason Griffin and Dr. Shawna Sellers. The program is developmentally appropriate for grades K through 12 and builds sequentially each year to reinforce core competencies, goal-setting, decision-making, effective communication, emotional regulation, and peer-resistant strategies. The intent is to reduce the use of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other substance in our students that are in grades K through 12. By increasing the protective factors such as self-efficacy, it will also produce, um, positive peer norms. Our goal is also to improve student attitudes toward healthy behaviors and academic engagement. Implementation of the Too Good for Drugs in our district will strengthen prevention education, support the mental health and well-being of our students, and contribute to a safe and supportive school environment. We currently, the curriculum has arrived. The, uh, amount of the curriculum, and I can give, um, overall, with a three-year sustainability plan, was over 61,000. plan, was over $61,000. The first year includes training for our certified health and PE teachers, as well as the materials for our students. It is a 10-week curriculum. We are going to implement this right now in grades 1, 3, 5, 7, and 9. We benchmarked with Wilson County and Duplin County that have implemented this for the past three years with success and some outcomes data. The second year of the training includes the curriculum materials and a train-the-trainer program. So it will, we will have someone go and train the trainer so we can sustain the training for new staff that come into Craven County schools. The third year of this budget includes materials only. So we began looking at this last October. We have done quite a bit of research as a district within our curriculum and instruction, and we are very, very proud to have partnered with our opioid program manager to assist Craven County schools with this funding. Our training will begin on Thursday for health and PE teachers, grades 6 through 12, and on Friday for grades K through 5. The trainers are flying in from Atlanta, Georgia to come and train us. They have shipped all the training material, and the training will be in the boardroom on Thursday and Friday. It is a seven-hour training, and we are very, very excited to see the fruits of the labor of all of the individuals that have committed to such, something that is so important for our students in Craven County schools. Do you have any questions for me or for Ms. Godley?
Any questions from the board? Ms. Kitcinder, did you have, no. Ms. Stacy, do you have?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions. I just want to thank Ms. Forsyth for all of her work on this. It's been a year or so in progress. She and I talked about this quite a long time ago, and it first came about because of a meeting that the superintendent, former superintendent and I had with the county folks. And we were told that some time ago, when we had another superintendent here, that there was an offer made to pay for a curriculum of this sort, and we were unaware that that offer had ever been made. Found out that, you know, nobody here in this building was aware of any research related to trying to figure out what curriculum would be most appropriate and evidence-based. And so Ms. Forsyth has tackled that and benchmarked with these other districts where it's being used very successfully. So I'm really excited after all of the conversation with all of our partners at the county on the opioid task force that we, this day is finally here. And I'm really excited that hopefully those of us who have been around a while have seen the really unfortunate and tragic consequences of drug overdoses in our student body, and it is a very hard thing for us to grapple with as a community. And so I'm really excited that we're taking this on directly, and I think a lot of members of the community will be excited about that as well. So thank you for all your work on it. And my understanding is that the funding actually does come from the opioid settlement funds, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Ms. Forsyth? Hearing none, thank you very mu, oh, Ms. Kitcinder.
I also want to say thank you. Like Ms. Stacy said, this has been a long time coming. I remember sitting at an RAI meeting when this came up, and I wrote it down in one of my little notebooks, and now that it's finally here, it's a really good day, and I'm very eager and interested to see how it's going to be implemented. I think it's especially important to touch every single grade. I know it's a delicate conversation as young as kindergarten, you know, how do you, how do you address such topics with the little ones? But it is my personal opinion that no age is too young. I've had to have these conversations with my family personally due to a tragedy that we have faced, and there are certain ways that are appropriate, and I'm really eager to get this started, and hopefully this makes a huge difference in our community because what we're facing is not okay. So thank you guys for doing what you're doing, and I'm very much looking forward to it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Forsyth. Next up is the 24-25 financial status update. And following that update will be the presentation of a budget amendment, and at this time I'd call up Ms. Heidi Daly to give us the update. So Ms. Daly is new to our school district. She is our new financial officer, and we welcome you.
Thank you. It's good to be here. Nice to see all of you. So I'm just going to briefly go over kind of a high-level view of fiscal year 24-25. So it's just a disclosure, these are all pre-audited figures and are very much subject to change and likely will once we go through audit. So the auditors will be here the first week in September, and they typically present the 24-25 figures to the board in November. So next slide, please. The local current expense fund, that's what I wanted to touch on first. So this is basically the Craven County appropriation, annual sales tax refund, county portion only, interest earnings and fines and forfeitures collected go into this local current expense fund. As you can see here, this is just, it might be a little hard to read, please stop me if you have any questions, but I'm going to go on the year-to-date expenses and revenue column, which is the third from the right. And so we had a total amount of expenditures of $29,629,000. But as you can see for our revenue total, we received $24,146,000. So we had a deficit spend of $5.4 million. It was a bit worse, it was closer to 6.4, but thankfully, we were able to find some areas where we could move funds from the local current expense fund into our special revenue fund, Fund 8. And it was about $963,000 that we were able to move over to help this fund balance look a little bit better at the end of the year and give us a better start to the new fiscal year. So that consisted of mostly utilities, about $870,000, $48,000 in transportation, and $45,000 in technology, all budgeted for in Fund 8, so we were able to make those adjustments. Next slide, please. So just a look at local fund balance. I started out in 23-24 because that's the most recent, like, completed audited financials. So fund balance makes up of these, is made up of these categories. So non-spendable is your inventories. Restricted is really your accounts receivable. Assigned are the subsequent year's expenditures, and then the unassigned fund balance gave, which gave us a total ending fund balance of $12.6 million. So 4-24-25, that unassigned fund balance at year-end, June 30th of 2024, $3.368. And then the unused fund balance, which of course is pre-audited, so what I did there was I took the unassigned subsequent year's expenditures up above of the 8.8 million, and then on the previous slide, we were at a 5.4 million deficit spend. So instead of spending the 8.8 as budgeted, we only spent the 5.4, which gave us, to the good, $3.348. So adding that to the unassigned from 23-24 gave us an ending fund balance, of course, pre-audit, of $6.7 million. So I hope it's that good, but it's likely not going to be once we have our adjustments. Next slide, please. So this just gives you a statement of revenues and expenditures, very simplistic view. So the county appropriation up top of $24 million. And so what do we spend that $5.4 million on? Well, it's not one thing in particular, it's all of these things. So we spent $29.6 million with these categories: salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, materials, capital outlay, and transfers. So of course, the majority of those being salaries and benefits. So, and then I just put those along the instructional services, system-wide support services, and non-program charges. So those purpose areas, that's how we appropriate the budget. Those are the codes that you usually review when you do your budget resolution, are those categories. So the fund balance appropriation is 5.482. Next slide, please. This just gives it to you in a graph view. So 51% instructional services, system-wide support services of 45% in non-program charges, which are transfers, which really, the transfers are what we send to the charters, of 4%. Next slide, please. So the state fund, which is approximately 60% of governmental funds, this is a fund that zeros out. So what we spend, we receive. So we spent $100.5 million, we received $100.5 million. So we did have a remaining balance of $2 million. Of that, we did have some carryover, but then there were some areas that we do have allocations that we're not able to actually have expenses that will apply to those categories. So if you go to the next slide, I'll go over those carryovers. We were able to carry over in these program report codes, 069, the at-risk student services, that has to be spent by the end of this month, and we fully plan to do so. So it's earmarked really for the SRO contract for 25-26, so the tune of $438,000. And then 015, school technology fund, $24,000, that's operating expenses, it's a minimal amount, so that's what it'll go to. And then 131, textbook and digital resources, so about $465,000, and that's earmarked for ed mentum. Next slide, please. So federal grant fund operates similar, where it zeroes out. So we spent $10 million, we received $10 million. So remaining balance of $1.2 million. As you can see, it's zeroed out, and next slide, please. Thank you. So the carryover, which is about $1 million, is in these categories, IDEA for exceptional children of $148,000, and then all of the title for ESEA, Title I, II, and so forth. So as you can see, without having a total there, it's about $1 million worth of carryover that we do not lose. Next slide, please. Next is the capital outlay fund. So with this, you can see that the expense totaled $4.48, and then the revenue is totaled $4.41. So this had a deficit spend of $74,000 as well. So there is some fund balance there, and I'm sure this is one fund that will definitely have adjustments from the auditors as well. Next slide. Child nutrition, the same thing here. Expense totaled $8.5 million, revenue is totaled $8.2 million, so it had a deficit spend of about $306,000. Something to be mindful here, if you're deficit spending in child nutrition, you need to watch that fund balance because that's typically going to happen year over year. Next slide. And this is Fund 8, our other specific revenue fund. So the expense totaled $10.5 million, revenue $9.7 million, so a deficit spend of about $850,000. Of course, I didn't help this by transferring $963,000 into it from Fund 2, but I'd rather take the hit in Fund 8 than Fund 2. It had, it had a little room to spare compared to our local expense. So, next slide, please. So this is just a fun summary of all of those, just a more simple view, where you can see on that year-to-date expense and revenue, state zeroes out, local deficit spend 5.4, federal zeroed out, capital outlay deficit spend of 7.4, child nutrition deficit spend of 3.06, and then specific revenue deficit spend of $815,000. Next slide. So fund balance, it represents the excess of assets over liabilities. So audit outcomes that could affect our fund balance, accounts receivable, recognition of revenue within that fiscal period, and then inventories, liabilities, accounts payable, recognition of expense in the fiscal period. So these are a lot of things the auditors are going to look at. They're going to look at what revenue should be recorded in 24-25 that's currently showing in 25-26, and same with the expense. So some of those things get moved, which will affect that overall fund balance. So looking forward, 25-26 changes that are going to affect our fund balance, we are looking at a reduction of about $2 million in low wealth funding, and that, we have pretty much all of that is recurring expenses that are in there. There's a lot of salaries and benefits, so we're going to have to figure out where we're going to absorb that. And then appropriation of fund balance, this is just a three-year glance, something to be mindful of. 23-24, of course, $5.2 million, that is an actual figure because that is audited. 24-25 about to be audited and subject to change, $5.4 million. And then so far, budgeted for 25-26 estimated, and this does not include the reduction in low wealth funding of $5.2 million. So appropriating fund balance of $5 million year over year will eventually need to make some changes. So, next slide, please. So these, again, subject to change, I keep saying that because I want to make sure that that's clear. So the fund balance that I mentioned at the beginning of this is 6.7 million, that's the hopeful figure at the end of audit, likely will change, but the appropriation that has been budgeted is 5.28. And then the reduction in low wealth funding that was unanticipated at the adoption of the budget of $2 million leaves us with an ending fund balance at the end of 25-26, this is just a projection, of about a half a million dollars in the hole. So it's definitely something that I'm mindful of and something that I'm going to be working on. Next slide, please. Or that's the end, right? Okay. Any questions?
Yes, by Chairman Mason.
I would like to thank you for this, and I really appreciate you putting all the funds on one page.
You're welcome.
I think that really helps. And I guess I'm asking, we have to help you with the fund balance deficit, if you could just highlight to us when we're pulling unexpected, that would be good.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Stacy?
So first of all, welcome and thank you for this. I think this is a very helpful presentation and frankly underscores some of the seriousness with which the board has been reviewing budget matters for some time and trying to look ahead to what we are now facing. There are some major expenses that are not reflected in this presentation at this point, correct? Because we have had a number of very senior folks retire, and there are pension spiking issues that are also involved, so those are not reflected
You are correct.
In this presentation, correct?
You are correct, because we don't know that total yet.
Right.
And that is something that we are working on and working to get reduced. So, but it will have to be paid from local funds.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
In the interest of transparency.
Are there any other comments? I also would like to thank you for this presentation. I'm looking out in this room at members of the public, and a lot of you are very familiar faces, you're here with us a lot. And so I know this is And so I know this is the most transparent view of the financials that I have seen presented in this district, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
So we don't have to vote on that item, but next, Ms. Daley is going to present us with the budget amendment for the conclusion of the '24, '25 year. Yes, Ms. Kitzinger?
I do have one question. On the second to last slide, you made a comment that said we need to make some changes. Do you have any suggestions, or can I ask you exactly what changes we could begin to make?
Just being mindful of spending.
Well, I mean, I think that's our intent.
Yes.
I think we can all say that we try to be mindful, but I think that's subjective to many of us. We have a lot of different opinions of what our mindful spending looks like. So in your professional opinion, I think going forward, you're going to help us do that in your professional way, that's why you're here, right? But for right now, do you have some type of way to put into words how we can, what kind of change we could make?
I hope to give you those answers sooner rather than later. With only being here for a few weeks, I haven't been able to dive into all the details yet. You know, going through audit, I like audits, kind of weird that way, but I do like audits because it really gives me the full scope of everything. I like to get into the details, I like to know exactly where everything stands. So until I go through that, which will be very soon, I don't necessarily know all of the categories yet, but it's something that I'm happy to communicate with you at any time.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Daley before we move on to the budget amendment? Okay, I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Daley.
If you could enlarge that a little bit for some old eyes, that would be great. Thank you. So this budget amendment is actually just mostly true-ups at the end of the fiscal year. So you can see here in state, it's actually, the revision is zero, and it's just a true-up of amounts between those purpose codes. And then if you scroll down, and the exact same with the local expense fund, the revision nets to zero, it's just a true-up between those purpose codes. And federal, we actually did receive a bit more funding. It was actually an ESEA, so that's reflected here. Capital outlay, no change. Child nutrition, no change. And then special revenue fund, just some additional revenues that were received that were to be in fiscal year '24, '25, and those are reflected here. So it's basically just a true-up of all funds at the end of the fiscal year.
Are there questions? Yes, Ms. Mason?
So ma'am, we still don't have a budget from state or feds, right? So we're just by law for the state spending the same amount as last year, as provided in the law. Do you have any updates as to when we might be able to expect budgets from the state?
To my knowledge, they're not going to pass a budget this year. So there have been some minor changes. So the governor had signed House Bill 125 just a week or two ago, that passed a few things, like a step increase for certified personnel, and then like retirement going to 24.67%, and then $8,500 per person for medical. So, and there have been a few other minor things that have come out, but other than those minor things, we won't have one. So it'll revert back to '24, '25.
And then this question, I follow the federal government, as most people know, I worked for them. I'm not expecting them to come out with a budget, I'm expecting a continuing resolution. How does that impact us?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure. I'd have to get back to you on that.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the budget amendment as presented.
Motion.
Have a motion from Ms. Mason. Do I have a second to accept the budget amendment as presented?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Kirkman for this item. Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dasey.
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Arlene Gibbs.
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman.
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kitzinger.
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Laurie Spies.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Daley. Our next agenda item is to get the public records quarterly update. This is just for information purposes, and I would ask Ms. Jennifer Wagner to give us an update.
Good morning again. So since April, we have had 12 public record requests submitted. Three of those are still open, and so year-to-date, we have had a total of 17. So that's where we are as of today.
Yes, Ms. Stacy?
So Ms. Wagner, unfortunately, we've had several that have been very large, burdensome public records requests. One, the board was copied on, the response to it a week or two ago, it was some 2,200 pages, and required substantial redactions by our council. So there are many things that are concerning about this. One is the cost that we incurred, and so my plan is at some point in the future, as I have in the past, to go and review the legal bills related to this particular request. Given our budget situation, I think we have got to look carefully at whether or not we can continue to respond and still comply with the law, of course, but we have to put some guardrails on these sorts of requests. I also want to say that having reviewed a large portion of the response, I was disheartened to see the amount of public records that were created by the board that were responsive to this request. The subject matter of the response was... parts of it were deeply upsetting and saddening to me as a person who cares deeply about this district, and particularly what staff might be aware of, is said by members of the board. And so I would really encourage board members to be more cautious and careful about what they make a public record, in the event that those things become accessible to the public as they have here. I think it is also very much my feeling that service on this board is a privilege. It is certainly not a job, and it is an act of public service. And I really hope that the board shares that view, and would in the future be more mindful of comments about the pay of staff, whether that be somebody in this building or a teacher in this district. As the daughter and granddaughter of public school teachers, I think that folks who work for our system have the right to earn a living wage and ought not be criticized for what car they drive or anything of that nature. I think it is inappropriate for folks in elected office to be making judgments about what car somebody's driving or anything of that nature. And I think that has to stop. And I want to thank you for the time, the enormous time that you have had to spend responding to these requests. And I hope that we can figure out a way to not require the amount of time that staff and legal counsel put into these types of requests going forward. So thank you.
And just so you are aware, we are currently working on a draft regulation in regards to public records requests, with fees associated with it going forward, based, excuse me, based on some of the requests we have received recently, speaking in regards to the burdensome work, and then also the time that it takes for not only myself but other staff as well. So I plan on bringing that to you next month for your review, for your information.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from Ms. Wagner? Okay, thank you, Ms. Wagner, for that update. We do have a break slotted on the agenda again, but we're moving along pretty quickly, and if it is not the pleasure of the board to take a break right now, I would say we continue on. Okay, we're going to carry on. So our next item is, we're getting into our policies. Our next item will be our first read policies for this month. And I think if we could pull them up maybe one at a time, if, just for the benefit of the public, so they can see, the ones, policy 3225 to start, technology responsible use. Are there any revisions that the board would like to discuss on this policy? Hearing none. Would you please pull up policy 40240, which is child abuse and related threats to child Are there any revisions to this policy that the board would like to discuss? Hearing none. Couldn't we see policy 6220, operation of school nutrition services? Can you scroll down just to see? I don't think there are other revisions, there's just that strikeout. Are there any, is there any discussion about the revisions to this policy from the board? Is there any discussion on the revisions here? Yes, Ms. Stacy?
So I don't really have any discussion. I do have a question, though, for any of our staff who care to respond, because while I know that we have had to report misconduct in the past, and obviously, that's an important thing to do, my concern is that once we report it, the state basically takes forever to do anything about it or does nothing. So I find this a little frustrating, that we have to comply with this, but then the state basically does nothing. And things linger at DPI forever, it seems. Anybody care to comment? Dr. Boone? So again, to my friends in the legislature, thanks for nothing, because this does nothing to help us do what we need to do, which is to ensure that we don't have people working in school systems who shouldn't be working in school systems. Because when they don't do what they need to do to adjudicate these issues, no one in another district is aware. So they are not helping. This is all talk and no action.
Is there any other discussion on the revisions presented with this policy? Yes, Ms. Gibbs?
I would like to explore, to see if it would be appropriate for us to approve these, since we have had no revisions requested. Can we not go ahead and approve these and not go into second read?
Okay. Mr. Gatchel?
While that is a motion, sensible idea, your policy says...
Can you speak into your microphone? Sorry.
Unless they're exigent or urgent circumstance, your own policy says you go through a two process. Now, your policy does not have to say that, but change that policy, but under these set of circumstances, I'd rather do a two process.
Where the process is that if we don't have revisions to them, we would enter, we would send them to second reading? Is that...
So I think it would be perfectly acceptable if your policy in the future about adopting policy, your policy about adopting policy indicated that if there are no substantive changes, you could approve on first read. That is not what your current policy says. Wish to follow your current policy, you should move these to second. Does not appear that you exigent, urgent under...
So, Ms. Gibbs, could you repeat what your request was?
My request was to explore how we can move policies to an approval instead of going into a second reading.
Into a second reading. So we'll take that as an action to look at that. But in our current policy, we would, if there's no additional discussion or revisions to these policies presented here, we will move them to the September agenda for a second reading and approval at that time. We have four policies for second read. The first one is policy 1510 on school safety. Again, these are all in second read, and we reviewed these last month. And I will, at this time, these items are presented here in the work session, but we're scheduled to be on our Thursday evening agenda as well. Are there any additional discussion?
Since we're moving the Thursday's agenda to now, could we just go ahead and vote on these at this point?
Mr. Gatchel, can we go ahead if someone would like to make a motion about the...
I'll make a motion to approve all four policies.
We have, we have a motion to accept the policies now. Do I have a second to do that?
A second.
Have a second for Ms. Gibbs to do that. Have a second for Ms. Gibbs to do that? Is there any discussion on the four policies that are listed for second read? Yes, Ms. Stacy?
So I do have one comment with regard to policy sixty-four twenty, which we've discussed extensively. And I just find it interesting that it seems that some members of the board have changed their view on this policy now that we have a different superintendent. And I don't think that that policy and your view of it should really change depending on who is in charge. I think the question is, what amount are you comfortable allowing the superintendent to approve under his or her own authority, regardless of who it is? So I just reiterate my concern about that issue, given our current budget situation.
Is there any other discussion on the policies that are listed for second read?
Yeah, I'm one of the ones who want to vote for this because we are delegating the authority to the superintendent and it turns, and we're in the process of looking for a new superintendent. And by adopting this policy, we're consistent with other counties, and it will help us to attract a new good superintendent. This is just generally the way it is, and I think we just need to go there. The only addition was at my request was just to get the contracts that had been released the previous month so that each month we could start reviewing the contracts that were released, contracts not PRs, so we could get a handle on the budget. And I believe this little change accomplishes that.
Okay, is there any more discussion on the policies that are on for second read? Okay. Hearing none, at this time, Mr. Gatchell, can I entertain a motion to accept those that were on the consent agenda that we agreed to move at this time?
So you have a motion to approve the?
Them in second reading, mhm.
In second reading now, I think that has the same effect as approving the consent agenda. Assuming the two items are the same, but I think you have a second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve them in second reading as they're presented. We have a second to do that, and is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I would ask everyone in favor of approving these policies as presented in second reading to please signify by raising of your right hand. That's everyone, Ms. Nelder. Any opposed? No, it's unanimous that we would do that. And at this point on the regular agenda, we have us going into the chairman's report, but I think it is an appropriate time to take up those items that were modified on the agenda that were originally presented for the Thursday night agenda. And in doing that, because we have just discussed the second read of the policies, one, the items that were moved from Thursday night's agenda include resolution in support of equitable funding for exceptional children. That will require approval of the board, approval of prior meeting minutes, and approval of items that are on the consent agenda, and of approval of, if we have any closed session items that would have been coming. So, Mr. Gatchell, are we okay to move through these items from the Thursday night agenda? Having modified to today's agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So I would entertain a motion to, since we just covered the policies, on the consent agenda for Thursday evening are these four policies that we just reviewed, and also the out-of-county and water activity field trips, and an HR grant that was recently submitted by our staff. Yes, I don't know who had their hand up first, Ms. Gibbs?
And I would ask that we separately consider the advanced teaching roles program grant because I think the public should have the benefit of hearing about that grant.
Okay, we can do that.
I agree with Ms. Stacy on that.
Any one board member can have something removed from the consent.
Any one board member can have something moved off of the consent agenda. And we don't need a vote to do that, so. So.
So what are we voting on, because I would, I think the resolution in support of equitable funding for exceptional children was extremely well-written by Mrs. Stacy, but I would like to go one step further and put a motion forth, I'm surprising everybody here. I would like for Madam Chair, you and Mrs. Stacy to deliver that resolution to the legislator because it makes it harder to turn it down and postpone than it does just sending it.
Well, first I would like to, I thought it would make sense to go ahead with the four items on the consent agenda that we had just covered in second read, but what we will instead do is go to the Thursday night agenda and we will move in the order that those items are presented there. And the first item there is the resolution in support of equitable funding for exceptional children. And I would like to call on Ms. Stacy to read or speak on this resolution.
Sure, I don't think that I need to read it. I do want to give the public and the board the background on how it came about. So, a colleague of mine who sits on the Lee County Board of Education put a comparable resolution together in his district, and a number of school board members throughout the state have been taking up the same cause. As we all know, we do not actually receive adequate funding for our exceptional children's program. And so Amber Gober, our director, helped me to essentially take the Lee County resolution and put our numbers in where it was appropriate to do so. I think this is unfortunately one of a number of areas where the legislature is not adequately funding subsets of essentially our obligations. And it's really beholden to, upon us to advocate for our own funding with all the governments really with which we have to deal, so with the state and the county and also the federal government. And so I would just encourage my colleagues to support this resolution. I know that Lee County has already received a very favorable response. A letter that I'm happy to share with the board today from the state superintendent Mo Green and also the chair of the state board of education, largely agreeing with everything that is set out in this resolution. So, you know, it's just one little thing that we can do. And obviously, we're continuing to advocate for improved funding, even though it doesn't look like we're gonna get a state budget anytime soon. The School Boards Association is continuing to advocate for an improvement in our funding across the system. So this is just one little way of doing that.
Do you know of other counties besides Lee County that have also adopted this resolution?
I don't know of any off the top of my head. I will check back with Lee. I know several others also had it on their agenda for August. So I don't have the most up-to-date list.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the resolution as presented. And I would entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
Second.
And I have a motion from Ms. Mason, a second from Ms. Stacy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask that if you are in favor of adopting this resolution, please signify by the raising of your right hand. That is everyone, Ms. Nelder, thank you. So that resolution is adopted. The next item being requested to be moved from Thursday night's agenda is approval of the regular meeting minutes from the July fifteenth work session and the July eighteenth emergency meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as presented?
Motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Have a motion from Ms. Mason, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Kirkman. All those in favor of it, oh, sorry, any discussion?
Yeah, I need to make one point for the benefit of the board. So with regard to the minutes of our regular meeting on the fifteenth, I did ask Ms. Nelder to specify, as I stated at the time during the work session, the reason for my recusal with regard to the vote on the superintendent search. I wanted it to be clear that it was because of my service on the state school boards association. And so I've asked for an amendment to that effect for the benefit of the board. I wanted them to be aware.
So do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the regular July, from the work session in July? To accept the minutes as amended?
Yes.
Yes, I have a motion from Ms. Mason and a second from?
Second.
A second from Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please signify by the raising of your right hand if you approve the minutes as amended. That is everyone, Ms. Nelder, thank you. The next item is the approval of the closed session meeting minutes. These are closed session minutes from July fifteenth, August fourth, the August fourth panel hearing and the August eleventh panel hearing. And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from those dates, those meeting dates?
Motion.
Have a motion from Ms. Mason, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Ms. Stacy, is there any discussion? Hearing none, if, I would ask that if you approve the closed session meeting minutes as presented on these three dates, please signify by the raising of your right hand. That's everyone, Ms. Nelder, thank you. And before we get to the chairman's report, I would, we've asked to have the field trip item removed from the consent agenda and the HR grant removed from the consent agenda. So I don't know who is prepared to give any update on the out-of-county and water activity field trips. Yes, Ms. Stacy?
I don't think anybody actually requested that come off of the consent agenda. I think everybody's fine with that, doesn't involve any money, so I'm fine with it. Unless somebody else did, I didn't hear that. So I think that's fine on consent.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the only item we're removing from the consent agenda will be an update or an overview on the HR grant that was submitted. Dr. Boone, would you care to share that information?
You all will have to excuse me, I was not prepared to discuss, but I will. The state of North Carolina has an opportunity for Craven County Schools and other LEAs to participate in what we call the advanced teaching roles grant. This is a grant that has to be applied for, what you do, you complete an application, but it has to be board-approved. And there are certain parameters that the grant offers in regards to using, what it really is, is about using our best and qualified teachers to support other teachers in the district. What we do is we sit down with the parameters of the grant and we use those parameters to develop a budget for the professional development that will happen as a result of the grant. We apply for what we think we need, but there is a timeline implemented within the grant itself, and there is a certain schedule. So we will not know when we will, if and when we will be approved for this grant, but it had to be submitted last week. And so we sent it out, you know, so that you all could see it and we saw approval to go ahead and submit that grant, and we did receive the majority of feedback for the vote. This would be a three to five-year grant. If awarded, we will have what we call an implementation and planning year under the guidance and scope under DPI using the Public Impact Group, which is who we sought to use, is the group that most districts use for the grant. And it will provide us an opportunity to focus on some of our needed schools and support our beginning and new teachers and alternatively licensed teachers to the district.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I think as a formality, I would like to entertain a motion to accept that HR grant as presented.
Motion to accept it and second.
And I have a motion from Ms. Mason, a second from Ms. Stacy, is there any discussion? Hearing none, if you are in favor of approving the HR grant proposal as presented, please signify by raising of your right hand. That's everyone, Ms. Nelder, thank you. And so that brings us to the items that remain on the consent agenda for Thursday night. And those items are the four policies that we approved in second reading and the out-of-county and water activity field trips.
Motion to accept them.
Have a motion from Ms. Mason to accept the consent agendas as presented minus the HR grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Gibbs. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing none, I would ask all in favor of approving the consent agenda items as presented minus the HR grant, please signify by the raising of your right hand. That is everyone, Ms. Nelder, thank you. Next is the chairman's report, and I would like to start that with a discussion of any public input with the board. We always like to thank the members of the public, not just the ones who come and speak, but all of you who come and are often present in this room. When I know you have other things you could be doing in the middle of the day. Thank you for staying engaged, and I think Mr. Hill has left, but we appreciate him coming today and talking to the board, talking with the board. Are there any comments from my fellow board members? Yes, Ms. Stacy?
So yeah, I would just second what you've said with regard to Mr. Hill. I appreciate his comments. I think the board recognizes the major impact that AI is going to have, not just in the education space, but throughout everything we do in our day-to-day lives. And certainly, we're not unaffected by it. There is already some policy that we have that speaks a little bit to the use of AI in the classroom or by students in their work. I'm sure that more revisions will be required to that going forward. I do think that we are really in a bit of a quandary from my perspective where it comes to the use of these devices, particularly in the elementary grades. I think that we have to look very seriously at the use of devices by our youngest students and what that does to their mental health and their emotional well-being. I think the studies are quite conclusive at this point that it is not a positive effect. In fact, it's very much the opposite. And I think we need to begin looking seriously at work being done by folks like Jonathan Haidt, his book titled The Anxious Generation. I think there is a lot to be learned from experts in that area about what we should and should not be doing with our youngest learners. So I think we have So I think we have to consider that while we're considering what AI is going to do generally. But I don't think that it's something that we need to be exposing our students to too early. Not only does it do the work for you. I've had the occasion to use it. And for those of us in the legal profession, it's going to be quite professionally changing, I think. When I can upload 2,200 pages of documents and ask AI to summarize or pull quotes or do anything of that sort, it makes a lot of what I do a lot easier, right? And so that's obviously going to have major ramifications for everything we do in life, regardless of your profession. So his point is well-taken, but I think we have to consider it in conjunction with the basic skills which ought to be our focus for our youngest students and how AI actually may be quite a negative in some ways for mental health as well.
Yes, Ms. Mason?
Um, I get AI is here. I get we're using it. But saying I want AI is like saying I need transportation to get from Dover to Havelock. Do I need a car? Do I need a bus? I mean, you can't just say I want AI. You need more things. And AI is subject to the information base it's getting and it has a bias due to incorrect information that's fed into it. And the AI or LLM models just aren't made for teaching as they are now. So I think I agree with Ms. Stacy. We need to look at what are we doing for the elementary school kids? You know, I have been diagnosed as ADHD through my entire life and Hopkins says I'm high functioning and they don't know how. But you know, you present a screen to me with a lot of movement on it and I get lost. And I have a hard time focusing on what I'm supposed to be focusing on because every new button that's coming up is exciting to me. And so I just can't imagine our elementary school kids. And I really think you're right, we need to do that. But when we say AI, I want more of a description of what do you mean by AI? Where are we applying it? It, I mean, it's just software and it all goes to ones and zeros in the computer. And how it goes to those ones and zeros is very important. So, and my other concern is when I was working at Fort Meade, I was responsible for reviewing AI stuff and I always funded the research, but I always protested it going into operations. Because what happened is, and it happened many times, is people were so enamored with the computer and how powerful it is, the person making the decision was held wrong because the computer was right. And then I go and research stuff and I'm like, no, the person was absolutely right. The computer was wrong. Why are we? And a couple of the people lost their ability to be on their position until that research was done. So I have a concern about how we implement it and there's an ethics issue with it that has totally not been identified. So that's where my concern is.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. The next topic that I have is to give an update on the superintendent search. So at last month's meeting, the board voted to accept the proposal of McPherson and Jackson. They are a third-party firm that specializes in superintendent searches. And from that meeting, we had asked Mr. Gatchell to please arrange a contract with them. And he has done that. That contract has not yet been signed, but has been approved and accepted on both sides. And so, yes, Mr. Gatchell?
I have a signed contract from McPherson. Signature and the finance officer's signature.
Okay, great. Thank you. And so our next step with that is that this firm will be, they are scheduled to be here next week and there will be a special call meeting that will be open to the public when we'll, we will discuss with this firm. Our board will be meeting with them for the first time, all of us. And we will be discussing with them the things that we are looking for and want to see in the next permanent superintendent. And I invite the members of the public to be here. So that meeting will be posted, by the end of the week, it will be posted. And the only other item I have left in the chairman's report is to entertain a motion to approve the panel hearing reassignment recommendations. So last week, there were two panel hearings for student reassignments. We just approved those minutes a few minutes ago. But now I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendations that were made by the panel.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion from Ms. Mason. Do I have a second to accept the panel recommendations?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I would ask everyone in favor of accepting the panel recommendations as presented to please signify by the raising of your right hand. That is everyone, Ms. Nelder. Thank you. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A3 and A6, to consult with an attorney in order to protect the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, or condition of appointment of a public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee.
Motion.
I have a motion from Ms. Mason to enter into closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Stacy. Is there any discussion? Hearing, hearing none. Please signify by the raising of your right hand to go into closed session. Ms. Nelder, that is everyone. And we are in closed session.
We're back from our break. At this time, the board has adjourned from closed session. We're back in open session and no action was taken in closed session. And at this time, I would call on Dr. Boone to present the HR reports to us.
Still morning. Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Okay, I am requesting the approval of three items. Premier Professionals Report II, II-A, and II-B.
II, II-A, and II-B.
II, II-A, and II-B. Are we, is there a motion to do all three of those together? Is that with that? Do we have a second? Hearing, no second to that motion. That motion fails. I would entertain a motion to approve Human Resources Report II.
Second.
Do I have a second? And I have a second for Ms. Kitzinger. And I would ask Mr. Stout to take a roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have discussion?
Dr. Boone, can you clarify, there are obviously, this is the time of year we often have a number of resignations. Can you compare resignations at this point, this year, to resignations at the same point last year, approximately?
They're actually a little elevated, but around the same numbers, Ms. Stacy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on Human Resources Report II? Hearing none. Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey.
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs.
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman.
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kitzinger.
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Laurie Spease.
Yes, thank you. Report II is approved. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve Human Resources Report II-A. Have a motion from Ms. Mason. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion about Human Resources Report II-A? Hearing none. Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey.
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs.
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman.
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kitzinger.
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Laurie Spease.
Yes. Thank you. That motion carries and that report is approved. Finally, I would entertain a motion to approve Human Resources Services Report II-B.
So move.
Have a motion from Ms. Mason to do so. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion about Human Resources Services Report II-B? Yes, Ms. Stacy.
So, I am going to oppose this report, and I'm doing so because we simply are in a financial situation in which we cannot be hiring new folks as much as we might like to do that. And we've got to do everything we can to help the bottom line we were presented with earlier today. I think that is one of this board's most central missions and charges is to be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. We certainly don't want to be like some other districts that we have read about across the state. And so, for that reason, I cannot support some additional new hires.
Is there any other discussion? Ms. Mason?
I, I, I agree with Ms. Stacy that we need to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. But you can't just say, no new hires, because if you have a vacancy in a position that there's a demand for, you know, obviously, that's not where you want to, you know, take the financial hit. You want to approve it. So, it's not just clear no to me. It, and I'm going to support it because these positions are needed. And they help kids want to come to school and complete their, their high school diploma. And that's what we're about, getting them to get the high school diploma.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey.
No.
Ms. Amy Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs.
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman.
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kitzinger.
No.
Ms. Patty Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Laurie Spease.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Boone.
Thank you, Board.
Before we move into the last portion of our agenda, excuse me, with board comments, I would entertain a motion to cancel the Thursday night board meeting based on the conversation we had earlier in the meeting.
Motion.
Have a motion from Ms. Mason to do that. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Gibbs. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Stacy?
I would just, for the record, renew my opposition to this because of the late notice to the public. We are beginning school. We have all kinds of issues that this board hears about all the time from staff and parents. And we are giving 48 hours' notice that the only public input happened earlier today for this month, so I have to oppose this.
And I, again, for the benefit of the public, would just say that we currently have typically two public input sessions each month. That was not typical for the prior boards, and so that is something new we have done this year. And we regret that in this month, and we will only have one, but we think, we think it's a necessary thing. So that two of our board members are parents of elementary school children. So, that two of our board members are parents of elementary school children. One is a grandparent of elementary school children. So, we have personal interest even on our board to be participative in the elementary school orientations. Yes, Ms. Kitzinger?
Right. I do think, yes, we do have two public input opportunities. But again, those who are planning on coming on Thursday now don't have that opportunity. Are we making an effort to reschedule for this month? Or are we just going to put it off until next month? Additionally, I was just planning on not attending on Thursday night our meeting so that I could go to orientation with my kids, as I let you guys know last week. And I mean, are we going to just let it go this week, this month, or just reschedule? Or it is what it is?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Gatchel. But I do believe, I know that we are not making any violations of our open meetings laws by not holding the meeting because we offer public input more than once a month. Mr. Gatchel, is there any?
That is, that is correct.
So, I would entertain a motion to cancel the meeting Thursday night.
You already have it.
I'm sorry, yes. We have a motion from Ms. Mason. And a second from Ms. Gibbs. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey.
No.
Ms. Amy Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs.
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman.
Yes.
Ms. Laura Kitzinger. Ms. Patty Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Roy Speas.
Yes, thank you. That motion carries and we will, the meeting for Thursday night is canceled. At this time, I would ask the board to share any comments or news and happenings from their districts that they'd like to share. I'll start with you, Ms. Kitzinger. Nothing, okay.
I'd just like to wish everyone a very good year. It's always exciting to start the year out every year, many times since we have to go through this. But it's wonderful. I, I'll be praying for everybody. And we're just looking forward to an excellent year. Thank you.
Ms. Stacy?
So, just excited about the start of the school year and looking forward to a number of things happening throughout our schools. Very excited that the Bangert PTO is having a prayer walk tomorrow afternoon from 3:30 to 5:30 for parents and staff to come. So, I'm looking forward to being there for that. And then, I, I want to speak for a moment a little bit further about the budget situation. And I think that really what this is all about is first principles and getting back to focusing on our students. That is the why we are here. What they are getting in the classroom from the school system. And in order to do that, we have to get them there. They have to be in school. They have to have teachers in their classroom. And they have to be fed so that they actually can sit still and learn what they need to learn. And so, that's my core focus. And I really think that we need to continue to look for ways that we can find additional savings. And I think that means addressing some of the other issues that are really not core to the mission. And so, I am going to continue to ask that the board focus on other areas where we may be able to make additional cuts that are not directly related to classroom instruction. And I think those exist. And I would encourage the board to continue to ask questions. And I'm going to continue to ask questions, even, even though I don't always get the answers to the questions I'm asking, so.
Okay. Ms. Mason?
I also would like to say that with my church, there's going to be a prayer walk at Bridgestone Elementary School on Friday at 3:30. And we're excited about that. And we invite the public in. Also, I had the distinct honor of working in the cafeteria for the Sunshine lunches. And it's amazed, at Trent Park, and it's amazing, and I had it earlier as well. And it's amazing how many lunches our nutrition department is serving to other people. At Bridgestone, they went to Cornerstone several times to get the right amount of meals out. And at Trent Park, you know, we supplied YMCA with 100 meals. And I think the nutrition department deserves a lot of credit for what they're doing. And I believe the leader really walks the talk. And her organization and their enthusiasm show it. And I think that's great. I also have, while not in my immediate district, but is one of the feeders, James W. Smith has a fundraising effort for a playground because, and I, you know, I have, my husband and I have donated to it because it's a well worthwhile effort. And I'm excited about it. And I'm excited about the plans that was shown. And I think they're doing a great job. I think at Bridgestone, the movement of some of the things that the principal has done is going to, on the playground, is going to encourage younger kids to show their creativity and experience more things. And I agree with Ms. Stacy and principal. We need to discuss the priorities of what we're funding. I think we are all in agreement that we need to do it. I think we're in disagreement on the how. And I think that's where we need to discuss priorities. And I think that will be great going forward.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I would just like to say that I'm looking forward to seeing all of our staff and students and families at all three orientations. I'm planning on attending all three. And then, also just wishing everyone a safe and great year.
Mr. Kirkman?
Yeah, Ms. Wagner gave an extensive report earlier in terms of all the many things that had taken place just in the month of August. But in particular, a lot of the things that have been done to our facilities to have things ready to go for all of our students and teachers. And I'd just like to say a big thank you to everyone for all their work that they've done this summer to get everything ready for school, both at the child nutrition and also with maintenance in the bus garage and everybody. Everybody's been working around the summer just to be ready for Monday. And we greatly appreciate what they've done and wish everyone the very best for a great year.
Ms. Mason?
Yeah, I would like to glom on that because I had it written down, but I failed to say it. I agree with you. The quick fix everybody did to Vanceboro Farm Life and the effort extended by the central staff, as well as the school, was really well. And I'm just ecstatic that the problem was solved so school can start on time. And I think it was well done.
And I just would echo some of the sentiments about how important it is that this district and this board sets the example and for being good fiscal stewards of everybody, every stakeholder in this county. And I don't doubt that everybody sitting up here on this board is trying to do that. And I also am very encouraged at the work that Mr. Stout and Dr. Blunt have been doing. Most of their work to help get us in a better fiscally responsible and better fiscal position is happening behind the scenes and people aren't seeing it. But I want, for the benefit of the public, you to know that every member of this board, I'm certain, takes that responsibility very seriously. And we appreciate the work that has been going on over the last few months. And I also want to say that in the HR report that comes out each month, usually on the last page, there's a summary comparing vacancies in all of the different positions year over year. And I'm really excited to say that last year, the week before school started, we had 86, 86 full-time classroom teacher vacancies. But this year, the week before school starts, we only have 53. Now, not in exacting numbers, but it means that about 700 kids or more this year are going to come to school on the first day and they're going to have a teacher in their classroom. And I think that this board and our staff and this community can be proud of that. I think it is evidence that people, employees, professionals, families, are making Craven County the choice. And I'm very proud of the work that's happening here. I look forward to being in the schools in my district over the next few days for their orientations. And I also just wish a great start to the new school year to everyone. And if there is no additional business or comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? A second, all in favor? Please signify by raising of your right hand. That's everybody. Thank you. We are adjourned.